Good evening, everybody. I'll call the meeting to order. I'll ask if Stand, if you're able, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming, everybody. The first order of tonight's business is special recognition, and I'll turn that over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody.
Cool. All right.
What I'd like to do tonight is take a couple of minutes to recognize the efforts of some students here in our district. I love nothing more than to celebrate hard work and achievement, and tonight we get to do that with students from the Middleborough High School, the John T Nichols Middle School, the Berkeley, the Henry B Berkeley Elementary School, and the Mary K. Good Elementary School. So before I get into the awards for the students, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the award because it's new. And what I can tell you is that in December of 2021, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education decided to pilot a new student achievement award to recognize students who scored in exceeding expectations on either an ELA or a math MCAS exam during 2022. It spanned multiple grade levels and had additional criteria set by the state. So the state chose tonight's students. This wasn't selected by our district. And what I'll do is call, I'm going to call you group at a time and have you stay up here. And actually, Mrs. Healy, I'll call you up to help me hand out the awards. I'm going to start with the high school and work my way down. Please come up to receive your award. And if you want to just line at the front of the stage, we're going to take a photo with everybody when we're all done. So families, get your cameras out. And I will call the names and then hand the envelopes. I'm going to start with the high school over to Mrs. Healy. Okay, let me make sure I have all the high school students. Okay, I have all the high school students. So it's Ava Callahan, Chloe Deegan, Anna Dufresne, Valerie Ellis, Anna Jane Erickson, Stephen Folger, Quinn Erica Johnson, Olivia Marshall, Darrell Nania, Anzo Rich. Did I say that right? I did. Lily Robeski, Skylar Whitehouse Carlson, and Faith Williams.
In there. Thank you.
Thank you, high school students. Next, I'll move to the John T Nichols Middle School students. Okay, I have Jolie Lozon, Charles Hansen, Jasper Freeman, Si, Si Sippersooth, William Lyons, Joshua Howard, Bianca Rosa, Aurora Angus, Joshua Jones, Ally Mahone, Cody Constantine, and that's my Nichols Middle School list. And then our elementary learners from both the Berkeley and Mary K. Good schools. I have Violet Hamel, Damon Eichels, Skylar McNeely, and Isabella Kamara. And I believe we have one student who arrived late, Skylar Whitehouse Carlson. Are you here? Come on up. Congratulations to all of our students. Thank you for making Middleborough so proud to have you as part of our community. So thank you, parents. I hope you enjoyed tonight and joined me in celebrating with your children. Job well done.
So, thank you, everybody. We really appreciate you. What I'm going to do now is, we have a budget hearing scheduled for 7:15, so I'm going to recess the meeting for five minutes. Thank you. We're going to skip a little out of order because we have the budget hearing, and I can't start that until 7:15. So Nate, I'll give you the opportunity to give your...
So, starting with the MEK. This week at the MEK, as we returned from the break, we are celebrating Read Across America Week. We have a theme for each day. Monday was Fox and Sox. Tuesday was supposed to be Green Day, Green Eggs and Ham. Wednesday was Wacky Wednesday. Thursday is Cat in the Hat, and Friday is Sleep Book, where people wear their pajamas. And it's been great to see everyone so excited about reading and writing. Then from the MKG, the book fair is going well. Thank you to all of our volunteers to make this a success. The MKG after-school clubs start on Monday. We look forward to rescheduling the performance by Jesse Green Chainsaws Cheeseburgers and Rock and Roll. Dr. Green is a world-renowned master chainsaw sculptor. He is also a highly acclaimed motivational speaker. He has been featured in the National Geographic Channel's primetime series, American Chainsaw. He tells the story of his own road to success, as well as his failures and struggles along the way. He inspires students to follow their dreams and find their place in the world. Never give up. Now for the HBB. Lots of fun stuff going on at the HBB. We just started our winter/spring round of after-school clubs, and we have all sorts of fun options for the kids in every grade. We are also looking forward to the start of the annual HBB Read-A-Thon, which begins next Monday. The Read-A-Thon is one of our biggest fundraisers of the year, and we have a lot of fun and prizes available over the two weeks. Anyone interested in supporting the Read-A-Thon can find more information in tomorrow's edition of the best of Berkeley's newsletter, which is available on the website. And lastly, we are looking forward to our kicking off the Read-A-Thon with our annual Family Reading Night, which is a fun event for families and will be held on Tuesday evening. Doors open at 6:30 p.m. The theme of the event is traveling the world through books, and we hope to see you there. For the Nichols Middle School, we have a math club meeting coming up, and it's still to be determined, and unified basketball team starting up at the Nichols Middle School for the first time, which is amazing. And parent-teacher conferences will be in April. Now finally, for the MHS. Good luck to the boys' basketball team and their game tonight against Situate. We are all rooting for you. Good luck to our track athletes competing in the New England Championships and Indoor Nationals in the next two weeks. Good luck to Christina Chain and her running to become the 2023 MASC president. You have accomplished great things, and we hope for the best. And Winter Sports Awards Night will be on Wednesday, March 15th, at 6:00 p.m. in the auditorium.
Thank you, Nathan. Does anyone have any questions for Nathan? I do, Nathan, because you forgot the most important news. Will you be attending next year?
Oh, so recently, I have committed to Franklin Pierce University, New Hampshire, to pursue a degree in nursing and to play soccer.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, Nathan. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
It is 7:15, so I'll put this meeting on hold. I will open the public hearing on the budget. A couple of things to get over with first is the, according to Masala, we have to post the public hearing for the budget, and which we did. It's included in your packet, and we posted that in the Nemasket Weekly. And with that, I will turn the budget hearing over to the superintendent.
Great. Thank you. Okay, welcome, everybody. This presentation will be in two parts. I have brought with me, of course, Director of Business and Finance, Sarah Hickey. And she will be talking specifically about all the numbers and facts associated with the proposed budget. Before we get into that, what I'm going to do is talk to you a little bit about this budget more in depth, to give you kind of the story behind the numbers. There are several budget drivers that have led to this proposal. This proposal has been a joint effort through multiple aspects of the administrative team. We've had consultation with the Budget Subcommittee of School Committee. We've had the Finance Committee represented at our Budget Subcommittee meetings, and this has been the product of a lengthy effort with principals and directors really conducting needs-based assessments to determine what's going to go into the proposed budget for this year. The budget drivers are divided into these categories, which include salaries and staff. I'm going to go into depth on each one in subsequent slides. Technology, curriculum and instruction, facilities and maintenance, special education, student services, and transportation. Let me just make sure that goes the right way. Okay. So when looking at salaries and staff, it is important to note that education is a completely human resource-driven industry. Simply put, education happens because of the teachers, the staff, the faculty, the humans that are here in our district, and so this is a major budget driver for our proposed budget. We are the largest department in Middleborough with over 560 employees. Compensation includes salary, benefits, and retirement. We have five school buildings in Middleborough, and there are building-based faculty and staff in an array of categories: teachers, related services, paraprofessionals. We have administration, administrative assistants, facilities and maintenance, cafeteria workers, the technology department, our crossing guards, and transportation. So when you factor in, when you're looking at this budget as a whole, it's important to consider how many people we're talking about and the wide variety of services all of these individuals provide. The next driver is technology, which is divided into several categories. When you say we're spending money on technology, a natural question is, well, on what? That can include the maintenance of hardware and software throughout our district, the switches and networking equipment and infrastructure that creates our connectivity here in our district, things like copiers and printers. And then, of course, there's computers, Chromebooks, and iPads. Try to remember that these are not just teacher or staff-driven devices, but now include all of our students at all five buildings in some measure. So technology is an expenditure that, when you look at how we were accounting for this budget driver prior to COVID, it looked very different than it does today. And something that goes along with technology is that nothing, or almost nothing, is a one-time expense. When you buy a computer, depending on what type of product you purchase, it's not a forever purchase. It's a purchase for a set amount of time. So this is one of the budget drivers that requires constant attention. Curriculum and instruction is another major driver of this proposed budget, which involves programs like Staff Strong, which is our induction and mentoring program, assessment tools that we're using across all five buildings, horizontal and vertical articulation curriculum development, which is a fancy way of saying that we want to make sure what's happening at pre-K and K actually has a through line all the way to grade 12 in our post-grad programs. That's connecting the work of curriculum so that what happens at elementary will make sense at middle school and complete at the higher level. We have a math curriculum pilot, which is new math curriculum for the district, addressing learning gaps for all of our learners, and then, most importantly, professional development in the world of curriculum and instruction. And that's a wide range of topics as well: social-emotional learning, curriculum planning, math, literacy, civics, our NEASK coordination, which is our accreditation for the high school, evaluation and supervision of staff, and data-driven instruction. Next is facilities and maintenance. I think often people talk about Middleborough, and they think about our five school buildings, and that's accurate. We do have five school buildings, but we have several other properties here in our district. We have 34th Street, which is affectionately called Flora Clark, which is a former school building in our district, 6th School Street, which is the School Street School, 13 Forest Street, and also 49 Union Street, which is the Lincoln Delance School. So when you look at facilities and maintenance, it's not five buildings. It's five buildings plus these properties as well that require maintenance and ongoing preventative measures. Preventative maintenance and improvements in general are a major portion of the facilities and maintenance budget because, you know, if you neglect, it's much like a house. If you neglect a certain part of the house, you know, you have different financial implications from that. So a well-rounded budget considers what needs to be done at periodic times. Utilities like water, sewer, electricity, gas, and telephone, and I'm sure I don't need to tell everybody here about how this has particularly increased certain utilities in particular, and that staff is ultimately expanding. Because we have brought on, you know, not just the new high school that warrants a groundskeeper, but also the School Street School as an administrative building, we are expanding what we need as a facilities and maintenance department. Next is special education. We have approximately 615 students who are eligible for special education and related services, which makes up approximately 19% of our student population. We offer a full complement of services, which includes special education instruction, paraprofessional services, related services such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, behavioral services, counseling services, nursing, and also home-based services. These are services that range from pre-K, which truly is age-in. The students age-in at age three, but if you talk to that pre-K team, a lot of families are working with our district, starting when they are two years old, because students have to be identified for services to begin on that third birthday, all the way through postgraduate programming for certain students, students aging out at either age 22 or the receipt of a high school diploma, whichever comes first. And then finally, out-of-district expenditures, which are not, those are tuitions to out-of-district placements that are not set. Those tuitions are not set by the district. Student services, which you heard Kevin Avatable talk about this, actually, I think that was last meeting. I think it was last meeting. Some of the drivers behind this new department include comprehensive mental health system for the entire district, and CareSalus is actually one example of what I mean by, well, what's a comprehensive mental health system. Social-emotional learning and putting kind of, not just parameters around what that means, but defining what that means for the public school system. That's where you see Panorama, located at the bottom of this slide. School-to-work programming through both mass hire and youth works. And finally, professional development, which includes, but is not limited to, behavioral management and trauma-informed care. These are two of the big initiatives that were launched in the 2223 school year. Next is transportation, which includes transportation for all students in our district. It includes specialized transportation for students who are eligible for specialized transportation, and then transportation for students in both foster care and homeless programming. Finally, it includes the maintenance of this equipment as well. So I tell you about all these drivers because your budget really tells the story of what's going on in our district. And that's where I really will turn it over to Sarah momentarily, but what is our Middleborough story is often told through your budget. And what I've come up with tonight is some points, as vetted through the administrative team, to illuminate that story for you. Middleborough in this next chapter is a place where student opportunity and growth is something that we believe in and fund. It involves program development, taking programs that we have and strengthening them to maximize that reach to all learners. Rigorous and high-quality curriculum and instruction so that our students are getting a high-quality and valuable education. The development of multiple pathways for students so that there is no one right path as you enter into our high school and into adulthood. Students are planned for, for a multitude of opportunities. Support and development of staff through targeted professional development. We recognize how difficult it is to meet all the diverse needs of our community, and helping our teaching and instructional staff is a huge role in not just the budget, but what we do every day. And finally, comprehensively addressing the needs of the entire school community. And those needs branch from anywhere to mental health services to family assistance of any kind, quite honestly. So that's really the story of what the budget is. We'll turn into the numbers, but I wanted you to have this explanation of what these numbers mean so that they're not just numbers on a spreadsheet. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hickey, and I will hand that over to you as well.
Thank you. Thank you for coming to the budget presentation tonight. David Bach, who wrote an AP Statistics book, says that a picture is worth a thousand words, and so I try to paint a picture with a lot of graphs for you to look at instead of giving you pages and pages and pages of numbers to look at. So I am presenting to you the Middleborough Public Schools Fiscal Year 2024 Budget. And... Did you shut this off? It's down. Thank you. So my presentation tonight is broken up into a number of different parts. I'm going to talk to you about per-pupil expenditure comparisons, net school spending comparisons. I'm going to very lightly go over budget drivers because Superintendent Lyons already talked about those. I'll break up the budget into expenses by category. I'll break up the budget into salaries and expenses, and then again, by cost center. I've included information on our transportation budget, a comparison from FY22 to FY24, and then a summary of total costs from all sources of funds. So my budget starts off with per-pupil expenditure comparisons. Every Massachusetts school district is required to, within nine months of the close of its fiscal year, arrange for and undergo an independent audit of its financial records. So in the fall, I complete an end-of-year report, and then I submit the end-of-year report to the independent auditor. I'm actually meeting with the auditor next Tuesday on my FY22 end-of-year report. So because the end-of-year reports have to be submitted and then audited, the most complete information that the Department of Education has is 2021 because all of that has been complete and audited and certified. So this is, the 2021 per-pupil expenditure is the most recent available information. And this graph shows the distribution of per-pupil expenditures for all districts in the state. And literally, what the Department of Education does is, they take the total amount of money that we spent for the school year of 2020 to 2021, and they divide it by the number of students we had, and that's where this number comes from. So you can see that there are some anomalies that skew the data. Over on the left-hand side, there are two virtual schools that spend a little over $10,000 per student. That's on the far-left-hand side of the graph. And then over on the right-hand side of the graph, that's skewed right. Provincetown spent $41,319 per pupil in FY21. So they're an unusual circumstance because they have 133 students overall in that year. And for example, there were 11 kindergarten students, eight first graders, and 10 second graders. So that essentially is 29 students that need three different teachers. And so if you think having 25 students per class is typical, this is why they end up way over there on the right-hand side. So on this graphic, you can see that our per-pupil expenditure for Middleborough for FY21 was $16,199, and the state average is $19,062 for FY21. I've hit the clicker three times now. You have to point it right at... There you go. Where am I, where should I be pointing it? Thank you. Towards the computer. Net school spending. This funding requirement is one of the major differences between the school department and every other department in Middleborough. No other municipal department has a specific funding requirement, due in large part to the fact that no other municipal department's service is guaranteed by the state constitution. The school department also tends to be the largest portion of the municipality's budget. Not every penny... Not every penny spent on public schools counts towards net school spending. Only operating expenses, which is our general fund expenses and salaries and wages, and municipal indirect costs are considered net school spending-eligible. Expenses that are not net school spending-eligible are things like transportation and capital expenditures or expenditures funded by grants and revolving funds. There are three components to net school spending. There's the foundation budget, which is calculated for the district representing minimum spending needed, adjusted annually to reflect changes in enrollment, demographics, inflation, and geographical wage differences. There's the local contribution or local appropriation required to meet net school spending. Chapter 78 is the share of the foundation budget by the state. It was a law passed in 1993 as part of education reform. And then the local contribution plus the Chapter 78 equals our foundation budget. So if you think about the word "foundation," your foundation in your home is what your home is built upon. The foundation budget is where, what our budget is built upon. It's a number that we need to build from. So the foundation budget is referred to as required net school spending. This graph shows the distribution of net school spending as a percent of required. The data is skewed right for several reasons. Districts with small student populations would be over on the right-hand side. And then there are wealthy districts that choose to fund schools at a much higher rate than is required. Middleborough, Middleborough in FY '21 spent 126.1% of what was required. And the state average is 132.6% for FY '21. The budget drivers, Superintendent Lyons spoke about these. The only one I'm going to speak at any length that she didn't mention was we have Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requirements. So in addition to everything that was previously stated, the Department of Education gives us some guidelines that we have to meet. We have to have U.S. history. We have to have a certain number of years of English, et cetera. So the next part of the budget is where I have the graphs for you. So the town manager gave Superintendent Lyons and myself an increase in our budget for the year and asked us to have, spend $38,887,702. So in January, when I took the requests from the principals and the directors and aggregated all of the information and put together a line item budget, it was for $41,713,378. And I took that budget with Superintendent Lyons to the budget subcommittee. And we narrowed down the budget by $2.8 million in order to meet what the town manager had asked us to do. And so what I'm going to do in the next part of the presentation is divide that $38 million up by category, how we spend the money, by the type of expenditure, and then by the location. So the first part is expenditures by category. The Department of Education gives us a set number of categories. They are 1,000s, which are district leadership and administration. The 2,000s are instruction. 3,000s are other school services. And so I've divided the budget up into those pieces. And I'm going to walk you through those. The first category is the administration. The administration, which is called the 1,000 accounts, that encompasses expenditures for school committee, the superintendent's office, the business office, and legal services for the district. The 2,000 accounts, the large piece of the pie that you see there, the 2,000 accounts are instruction. So in that comes salaries for teachers, paraprofessionals, money for substitute teachers, professional development, textbooks and equipment, supplies, and instructional technology. And that is the biggest piece of the pie, instruction, because we are a school district, and that is what we do. The 3,000 accounts are for the Health Department and nurses. There's student activity money in the 3,000 accounts. That's where we fund athletics, a portion of our athletics. And that is where building security comes under. The 4,000 accounts, that blue piece of the pie there, is utilities. It is, it also includes maintenance and custodial salaries, maintenance of building and grounds, technology, infrastructure, and support. The 5,000 accounts, which is a very tiny little piece of this pie, is sick leave buyback. So there are some employees who were hired before a certain period who have the right to sick leave buyback. And so that gets paid out of the 5,000 accounts. The 6,000 accounts are for community services. Middleborough doesn't pay anything out of the 6,000 accounts. 7,000s for replacing motor vehicle. This is, again, a small piece of the budget. We have a transportation department where we have our own minibuses and minivans. So that would be replacement of two minivans for next year. The 8,000 accounts is for debt retirement, which doesn't fall under the school budget that the debt and lending is done by the town. And so I don't have, that's what the 8,000 accounts are, but we don't have money in those accounts. And then the 9,000 accounts are tuition accounts. And that is for the agricultural schools, the out-of-district placements, and that is where we have money for the special ed stabilization fund. So then the next thing I do with the budget is I divide it up. We think of, try to think of the budget as two different types of things. We have salaries and we have expenses. So our salaries take up the bulk of the budget, that $32,284,063. That represents 83% of the budget. So 83% of the school budget goes to pay the people who work for the schools. And then the rest underneath salaries, those are all of our other expenditures. So contractual services. That's, for example, the elevator inspectors that come in. We have AEDs in every building. So we get those serviced yearly. So that's the type. And we have contracts with vendors that will, you know, with copy machines for us. The next amount is supplies and materials. Other expenses, that's things that aren't specifically designated. That's why that number's so much smaller than the others. Utilities, 1. almost $3 million. Next year is the estimate for utilities. And then tuitions, $1,046,086. So that all totals up to our proposed operating budget of $38,887,702. The second graph I have for you is that the same thing, the 38,887,702 divided up into those categories on the previous slide. So again, the salary is 83%. That's the gold part of the circle there. And then if we go clockwise around the budget, contracted services is 6% of the budget. Supplies and materials, 4%. Other expenses, 1%. Utilities, 3%, and then tuitions are 3%. And then the last way I like to divide up the budget for you is by cost center. So our, the budget is designed, our actual line item numbers, our account numbers are designed so that I can break them up, break up the expenses in various different ways. So if you start over on the right-hand side with that purple, the purple where there's the Middleborough High School logo, Middleborough High School expenditures for the school is 25% of the budget. Going clockwise around the circle, Nichols Middle School is 19% of the budget. Henry Berkland School, 14%. Mary Kay Good, 15%. Mary Kay Good is slightly large, has a larger student population. Memorial Early Childhood Center is 9% of the budget. The large purple part, undistributed, 5% of the budget, that encompasses things like our curriculum department, our maintenance department, security expenditures that we have. So there's, and transportation also falls under, undistributed. District administration is the orange piece of the pie right at the top of the budget, 3%. Pupil Personnel Services, which encompasses both special ed and student services, is 7% of the budget. There's a little tiny piece of the pie for athletics, which is less than 1% of the budget. And then technology is a little, it's a little bit tricky here because the purely technology budget that doesn't fall anywhere else is 2% of the budget. But that doesn't take into consideration, for example, in the technology budget, there are, there is money for the computers for the freshman class. So there's technology money embedded into all of the different schools, significant amount of technology money, as well as curriculum into each of the different schools. Our FY '24 transportation budget. The regular education transport for students grades K through 12, that is our contract with Student Transportation of America, which we know as Five Star Bus here in Middleborough, is $2,632,245. We have budgeted $37,947 for transporting students to vocational schools. We transport students to Bristol, Aggie, and Norfolk Aggie. Minibus salaries, I have budgeted $731,000. Minibus expenses, $204,788. I've budgeted $46,000 to cover the salaries of our crossing guards. Special ed contracted services, $400,000. That is a significant increase over previous years. What I'm learning every single year is no matter how much I put in this budget, it's not enough. I'll be submitting an article-to-town meeting to increase this line for the current budget because what I budgeted last year was not enough. I've budgeted $107,500 for both McKinney-Vento homeless transportation and for the, for foster care transportation. We've seen significant increases in those last three categories. The total transportation budget is $4,266,980. The next slide is just a comparison from fiscal year '22 to '23 to '24. And the last column on the right-hand side is the difference between FY '24 and FY '23. So for administration, we have an increase of $139,319. We have an increase of $1,547,289 for instruction. $497,770 for school services. $398,692 for operations and maintenance. That 5,000 account line benefits, which is the sick leave buyback for employees. I budgeted the same amount every single year. So there is no difference in that. The equipment replacement, there's an increase of $37,000. That's to purchase two minivans. And then there's the tuitions. There's a decrease of $768,275 in order to balance our budget with the number that the town manager gave to us. We have to rely heavily on the IDEA 240 grant for tuitions. So that's why this number here is a decrease. Even though, even though tuition's increased at about 14%, we have a decrease here in our budget. And then at the bottom, you can see that we had an increase in our transportation budget of $466,580. And again, those, that was to compensate for those three lines, the special ed vendor transport, the homeless, and the foster care transport that have just been so outrageously expensive for us for the past three years. The summary of total costs from all sources of funds. So the town, the town portion of this, the operating budget, In addition, the transportation budget is also coming from the town, We are anticipating $1,300,000 in circuit breaker special ed reimbursement, $965,422 in the FY '24 IDEA grant. And then in addition to all of that, we will be funding salaries with grants and revolving accounts for $2,645,232, for a total of $48,65,336 for next year. So the next portion after this slide is the recommended motion. Before I get to the recommended motion, are there any questions for me about the budget?
Yes. Can you give me, I know that you explained it, but can you explain again the nature, can you give me a breakdown of the 5% that's undistributed? Just as, just as an example as to what some of the things we've gone over in the meetings.
Undistributed, district leadership. So that would be our curriculum director and all of the expenses for the curriculum director, for her office, as well as running the Start Strong, I'm sorry, it's called Staff Strong, welcoming for new teachers into the district. There's the salary for the courier for the district. There's the, we have three English-language learner teachers that go between buildings. So they come out of the undistributed column. Also in undistributed, we have course reimbursement for teachers. I can't know at this point what somebody's going to submit for next year. So the entire contracted amount for course reimbursement is in undistributed. But when we pay it out next year, it's going to get paid out at, you know, if somebody from HBB takes a course, it gets paid out of HBB. We have professional, money for professional development in the undistributed line. General supplies, textbooks, tutoring, computer software, district security. Utilities for, utilities for buildings that are not one of the already-named buildings, so the Thirteen Forest Street. And then our entire maintenance department there, salaries and expenses.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
For the fiscal year 2024 budget, do you know if a third cluster for sixth grade at Nichols is somewhere included in that? I don't know if you have, like, building specifics.
Sure. So, well, right now, this doesn't include additions to staffing. But that doesn't mean that there won't be additions to staffing. I am well aware of the request for additional staffing, specifically at the Nichols Middle School. It's something we have talked about, and that'll be kind of the next phase of the budget.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions? Does anyone in the audience have a question before?
Can you clarify again the decrease that programs line item where we're expending the $70,000, $80,000 less? I think you mentioned that you're going to make up that balance with a grant so that the money isn't coming from the budget, but I just was looking for a little clarification there.
Is that, do you mean the tuition?
The tuitions to other districts.
Out of district, she's talking about out-of-district tuition.
The out-of-district tuitions? So just let me get to that spot in my, in my spreadsheet because I can answer, I can answer the question better.
I can tell you that part of the story there has to do with the IDEA grant that we receive yearly. Over time, that grant has been used multiple different ways. We've used it for salary, always for special ed expenditures. But one of the things we did in this budget, correct me if I'm wrong, is allocate those monies specifically to tuitions, which allowed us to deduct from the operating budget. If you have a funding source for it somewhere, you don't- If you have a funding source for it somewhere, you don't need to account for it more than once. But it is allocating a significant portion of that grant for the specific purpose of tuitions. And feel free to jump in there.
Thank you. That gave me time to scroll to my spreadsheet to the appropriate place. So when Mrs. Healy, who is the Director of Special Education, submitted her budget requests to me, there was a request for $1,102,866 for tuitions to collaboratives. And then in addition to that, we had $1,437,444 for tuition for non-public, non-public schools. We needed to adjust the budget in order to compensate for the number that the town manager gave us. And the easiest way for us to do that was to subtract out monies from those tuitions with the, where we know we're going to get circuit breaker from the state for our special education tuitions. And we know we're going to be getting the, the money from the federal government for the ID, the Individuals with Disabilities Educational Act. The amount for the IDEA grant is an estimate from me. The amount for the special ed, the circuit breaker, is equal to the amount that we received this year. So we had $1.3 million in circuit breaker relief this year. So I used that money as a prediction of what we will get next year.
So it's not, not a reduction in services to the children in the districts? It's just a shuffling of where the money's coming from?
Correct, yes.
And then just to give you a little info on the circuit breaker program, that is a relief program from the state, but it isn't properly understood as a complete reimbursement program. First things first, in order for a student to be eligible for that type of reimbursement, they have to, their expenditures have to exceed a foundational amount, which hovers around $45,000, $45,000. It goes up each year, which is why I'm tripping over that number. And even then, the circuit breaker program doesn't reimburse 100% of those expenditures. So one of the things you've seen happening in the world of superintendents is actually lobbying at the state level to say, we need to fund these programs for these children. You really ought to be reimbursing us 100% for that expenditure. They have on-boarded since the COVID years some percentage of transportation reimbursement, which is the first of its kind. It's never included transportation. And oftentimes, you're paying a very significant amount of money because these children are transported out of our district. So that's now starting to get reimbursed, but again, nowhere near 100% of those expenditures. So that's just a little primer on circuit breaker.
So that, you know, $768,000, that sounds like about a quarter of what you had to cut from the overall budget between the, I think you said it was like forty-one, four hundred and, four million, one hundred thousand approximately, and we got to thirty-eight. Do you have a general sense of, was there another big chunk that you had to cut to make the budget? Or was everything, like, just reducing things in little bits and pieces throughout?
It, it was a combination of both of those, reducing many little pieces and some big cuts to things. Unfortunately, we had, had to have a conversation with technology, and Mr. Siciliano had to forego flat panel screens in classrooms out of the budget for next year. So there's, it, it's always difficult because it's hard to say what's the most important when everything is the most important for our students, so.
But you would, that would be potentially the only other large expenditure that had a significant, and everything else was kind of spread around as, as fairly as possible?
Yes.
Sorry, Sean.
I also think it's important to note that those cuts also didn't really come at the building level either. It was more department-level cuts, just to be clear, because the building budgets are quite tight to begin with. So just to allay any concerns, we weren't cutting supplies to children. It wasn't those sort of expenses. One, it doesn't yield the cut we're looking for. And two, that really, there really wasn't that room. That margin doesn't exist at the building-based budgets. So it was really more looking at different departments, like curriculum, like technology, like special education. Those are slightly different.
Is there anything else on the list that you already know you need to bring to the town for approval, other than the special ed transportation? Or whatever that line item that you said you never budget enough for, because it always ends up being more that you have to bring to the town to ask for the support to increase that line item? Is there anything else currently?
So I'm going to be working this weekend to put together articles for the upcoming town meeting.
Is it the town meeting or the select board meeting on, I guess it's like Monday, that you have to present this to, right?
Oh, no, Monday's meeting is this presentation.
Okay.
What Mrs. Healy's talking about is for town meeting. There are warrants that we'll have to submit to the town manager for approval and go to the town with a certain number of asks, and we'll be sitting down together to talk about that.
And those asks are exceeding the, the current thirty-eight million budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Welcome, Bob, and I appreciate your help this year from the finance committee side.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I have a comment and I have a question. And the comment relates to where you were just heading. This year, the town manager asked members of the finance committee, and I am a member of the finance committee, to be liaisons with different town departments. And the finance committee asked me to be that liaison. And I want to thank the school department for allowing me to sit in. I would specifically want to thank the Director of Business and Finance and members of the administration. The organization that Mrs. Healy put together, and then having our administrators and department heads come in and explain what's behind the budget was very useful. And I want to thank all of them that participated in that activity. Question. So the $38,887,702, chapter seventy money, can you speak to the chapter seventy money and how that impacts our thirty-eight, thirty-eight million, you know, dollars?
So the chapter seventy money, the initial estimates for chapter seventy were released last Thursday. And so what's going on right now at the town level is, and at the school level, is we're examining them. But again, those were initial estimates. I believe that has to.
Be voted on.
Has to be voted on and might not even be finalized until July. And so what we know for, for almost certain right now is that the town manager has allocated us $38,887,702 for the operating budget and $4266,980 for the transportation budget. And fingers crossed, it won't go down.
Mr. Chair. So let's pretend that the amount of money that the, I think you're using the town manager as the person that's giving you a figure, that number that was given to the school department to use has an estimate in it that includes an estimate of what chapter seventy may be, be part of that. That's the question. Is that a, that's my, that's part of my question.
Sorry, is your, is your question, what are we doing with the estimate? Or what happens if the estimate's incorrect?
Mr. Chair, let me rephrase it. Are our taxpayers, out of our tax bills, spending $38 million from that amount of money? Or does the $38 million include chapter seventy money?
The, the $38 million includes chapter seventy, I believe.
It, it does. So when we say that our taxpayers, yes, we are all taxpayers, and yes, it's coming from the state of Massachusetts, but our taxpayers are getting state aid to help us with our school, school department to function.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I, I, I just, if someone hears that we're spending $38 million, I think it's important for them to know that we're also receiving state aid, which, yeah, it's coming out of our pocket, but it's a different pocket.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. And again, thank you, Mrs. Healy. Your organization and putting this thing together is well done, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Sean, I messed up my presentation. I was trying to flip back to the slide about net school spending, where it talks about how net school spending is a combination. So the, there is a funding formula, which is probably the most complicated formula I've ever seen. And I do have a degree in mathematics, so five years of calculus doesn't help with this formula. But there is a funding formula for net school spending, and there are probably four or five people in the state that completely 100% understand it. And then I think the rest of the people in my role are fairly confident with this funding formula. But the funding formula takes a lot of things into consideration for every school district, and it calculates what they feel, and I use the word foundation budget, what they feel the foundation budget should be. And then the foundation budget gets broken up into two parts. There's the part that the town will fund, and then there's the part that the state will fund. And so the Department of Education puts together this spread, beautiful spreadsheet for me, and it says, you know, this is the local, this is the chapter seventy amount, and then this is what the local contribution should be. And I believe that also goes to the town manager. I'm gonna, can you get me to the last slide, Sean? And I think you need a new battery in your clicker. So the last slide is the recommended, the budget recommendation, recommended motion. And I'm going to read this and then ask for somebody to make the motion. It would be moved that the Middleborough School Committee approves $43,154,682 as the fiscal 2024 local education budget. Such appropriation includes $38,887,702, that's the operating budget, and $4266,980, that's the transportation budget. And further, that the total appropriation of $43,154,682 is in compliance with the Education Reform Act of 1993 and recommended by the superintendent of schools. And further, that the school committee direct the superintendent to allocate the following additional funding sources, which total $4,910,654. The FY twenty-four anticipated circuit breaker special ed reimbursement of $1,300,000. Revolving account and grant funding totaling $3,610,654. The final approved expenditures for the schools will be $48,65,336.
Chair, entertain a motion as read by Sarah. Do I hear second?
Second.
Discussion. I do want to say a couple of things, because I think they're important. We go through this process now in, through January, February, and now into March, and then we meet with the selectmen because the town meeting is in April. Part of the problem is that some of these numbers, we don't know the, the exact numbers until they're decided by the state. And the state, generally speaking, decides budgetary numbers in July. They finish in July, but it has on occasion gone to September. Last year, it went to September. I know the governor's budget came out, but that's the governor's budget. Her budget is not the budget that always gets approved by the legislature. I would also add, if you look in past history, her budget includes a lot of other things. It also includes revenues on the billionaire's tax that the people voted in. I will tell you this, the, the budget chair from the Senate side and the House side has not changed. And they tend to, when new taxation comes in in any form, they tend to downgrade the revenue the first year until they actually see it. That's their general MO, so that would affect the budget. She's projecting a billion dollars in revenue in that tax alone, so that can greatly change the budget itself. So that will be determined over a period of time. The other thing to remember is, in going through this process and making decisions about where the money goes, there are other factors that come into play. We haven't finalized all our contract negotiations. We haven't, when we get to the end of the year, as Sarah knows, we generally see where our student-wise, because an increase in student population could move, for example, a grade or change a grade. Or if students have specified needs, we are required under law to budget for those needs. We have to have a balanced budget by July first. And so the process of the budget, while we have a budget hearing, and we go to the selectmen next week and then go to town meeting, doesn't really end until we get to the very end of June. And to be totally honest with you, it, it never ends there because factors happen throughout the school year that make us look at different things and have to do, have to make changes. Over the past times, I've seen great fluctuations of increase, for example, in special ed over a period of time, and we had to make changes there. There have been huge fluctuations, for example, in transportation that have made us change over periods in time. And then also, we have had to make some changes with staffing based on numbers in certain grades. So that happens. So I just, you know, we talked about this at the budget hearing, but I wanted people to know, this is why I always ask on the agenda that Sarah talks about sort of an update of where at the budget, because things can change over time, and that's what happens. So as we stand here in sort of good shape, good shape can change pretty quickly. And so that's what I want to, sort of make everyone aware of. So that's all. Other questions or comments? I think we answered the question and comment that was in the chat that I saw. Anything else? Anybody else? With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the budget? And with that, the chair will end the budget hearing and go back to our regular school committee meeting. We moved it around because we had, does anyone have anything for public comment tonight? Not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one. School committee reports. Any member of the school committee have anything they wish to report? Excellent. And we have the co-presidents' reports. Ladies, welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having us tonight. We want to report out on our member spotlight of the month. This month, we'd like to recognize Kate Stack. Kate is holding yoga sessions two times per month at Nichols Middle School for high school and middle school teachers to help them out. Also, we'd like to recognize our four ESPs who are heading to our MTA ESP conference at the end of the month in Plymouth to further their skills. Those would be Karen Soderland, Laura Oteri, Teresa Smithy, and Cassandra Doherty.
And I want to recognize a fellow colleague who I've worked with for many, many years, Melinda Manigan. Right before vacation started, I saw her in the lobby of Berklin School putting out books for students, for them just to take home for the vacation to read. She is a big proponent of making sure kids have books in their hands to read, because that's, that's what best helps students, to have books in their hands to read. So we want to recognize Melinda. And that's what we have.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Any questions for the co-presidents? Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent's small report.
Thank you, it is small this evening. And actually, what I wanted to do was remind everybody that the DEI task force is actually a tab on, it's an announcement up on our website. And it's been open for just about two weeks, two weeks. And I'll just briefly go over it, but what I'll tell you is we're getting ready to close the window and start making selections. So before I do that, I wanted to make sure I announced it again to the community. I know in a mask it week, we covered it, and I appreciate that. We are looking for a wide variety of stakeholders, which includes, besides me, the three M- which includes, besides me, the three MPS school administrators, three MPS school employees, which would be a district employee, a classroom teacher, clinical staff member. We're looking for three current students. We're looking for three current legal guardians, ideally one from each level, elementary, middle, and high, and two community stakeholders. So the Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Task Force is a group of faculty, staff, and community members and students assembled to elevate our school community's cultural awareness. The purpose of the committee is to develop and promote strategies and best practices within the realms of all diversity within the school community. The ultimate goal is to have a more inclusive community so that we can provide a holistic, educational, inclusive environment for all. The focus areas are curriculum instruction and materials, facilities, hiring practices, opportunities for learning, and procedures and policies. So you can find that information on the website. Please do sign up if you're interested. It is completely voluntary. And we will be reaching out with membership and meeting dates very shortly. We actually have a meeting tomorrow to talk about the responses we've gotten so far. I think we're in the neighborhood of about thirty responses already. And that's my report for this evening.
Excellent. With that, I'll move on to the Middleborough High School building project. I don't really have anything because we haven't met since then. We have a meeting in March. So we'll have more of an update at the next meeting. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do I hear second? For discussion, the only thing on the consent agenda is a couple of fundraisers. One for Project Three Fifty-One Clothing Drive, the other for yard signs for seniors and approval warrants. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And then we have on our, one on our action item, which is a surplus of two school buses, Sarah.
Thank you, Chairman Young. We have a two hundred and eleven Chevy Starcraft twenty-passenger bus with a hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and seven miles on it, and a two hundred and twelve Ford Two-Fifty-Seven passenger van with a hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-one miles on that. Those two vehicles are currently not in use by our transportation department, and we are looking to surplus them.
Any, chair, entertain a motion to surplus those two buses?
So moved?
Do I hear second?
Second.
Discussion. Any questions for Sarah?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, for the people that don't know, what is surplus?
Thank you for asking. So when the school department has items that are no longer necessary for us, we go through the process of surplusing them with school committee. So we have a school committee policy, like, we can't just throw things in the trash. So these two vehicles may be of value to somebody. So the first thing we do is we offer them to the other departments in town and give them an opportunity to take them, should they want them. And then if there is no other department in town that wants a twenty-passenger school bus, then we would examine, would it be more valuable for us to try to sell it or to scrap it?
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Chris? Are you going to buy a school bus?
Maybe, maybe. Go on a nice tour.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? For other business in your packet was that the middle school, eighth-grade civics is going to Edward Kennedy Institute for the U.S. Senate, which is a very wonderful place. And before we adjourn, as you could ask me, if we could move the March sixteenth meeting from the Thursday to the Wednesday. We can't move it to the Wednesday that week because there are other events going on at various schools. I think there's a kindergarten registration, and so we have a lot of people out. But the, this school in particular is available to us the week after on the Wednesday. Does anyone object to moving it to March twenty-second? It'll be Wednesday the twenty-second. Seeing that, then our meeting will be Wednesday the twenty-second. We'll set it up that way. Any, anything else? With that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a great evening.